All right, welcome to the Mashpee School Committee Meeting of November fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen. I call the meeting to order at five thirty-three. And first item of business is the Blundell.
.....................................................................
All right, next we have public comment, which there is no public comment.
Mm-hmm.
And the next one...
And yeah, the next item would be the representative from the Mashpee Wapinaw Tribe who cannot make it with us tonight, so we will move on. Uh, that leaves us with the field trip to Kennedy Lake Park in New Hampshire on May twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen. There's some information...
Page one and two of the packet. This is now a state trip requiring your approval. State. Let me tell us that.
Thanks.
So the connection is singing?
Singing or performing along in the clubs.
Music function?
Make a motion to approve the request.
Motion approved by Nicole.
Second.
Second by Dawn. Any other discussion? There you go, Dawn.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Motion passed. And I failed to mention that, um, if you haven't noticed, that George and, uh, Jeff are not here tonight.
Thanks.
I just wanted to make sure for the record, they're not here today, so we're warning this three-year-old group.
Okay, can I have that one? Can I have that here?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. All right, next we have, uh, the update on the Quasnet renovation by Principal O'Brien.
Good evening. Hi. I'm happy to report, we are currently ninety-eight percent done with the repair project here at Quasnet School. And I attended the Board of Selectmen's meeting last Monday night, and we were just, um, approved for a little upgrade in the cafeteria where one more of the win- set of windows will be glazed. So I see it as a security feature here at school because the doors in the caf where most of our students congregate is, um, glazed, so you can't see in from the outside, but you can see out. And the other lower windows are just regular windows. So those will be glazed to match the door, and up above will have the shades. But, um, that was an upgrade or a change order with the project, and it was passed unanimously by the Board of Selectmen, so I'm really happy for that, and I appreciate it. Um, other than that, we have had some ongoing issues with our bathrooms. They- we have Roto- Reader here today, and, um, the staff bathrooms were closed yesterday and in the beginning of the day today. They have cleared the problem, and they know, um, the Department of Public Works is working to rectify this ongoing problem that we are having. So, um, hopefully we'll have that all set within the next week or so. But we've had problems with, um, some debris in the pipes and then some other issues, like I said, that are being resolved currently. Other than that, everything is going well. We had the boom out here today. They still have to finish up some trim around the tops of the roof, up above the epus area. Um, but it's really just working on the punch lists within the classrooms, and that's covering everything from some of the blinds that were not working properly, so they're replacing individual blinds. Um, you can see the crew here working on cleaning and buffing the windows. Um, they've been doing that as part of the punch list. They've had, um, the two doors on the opposite side of this courtyard, we have two leaks that they have not fixed yet, and it has to do with the threshold that has to be adjusted. And so we're still getting rain into the building in those two locations. We did have a problem in the gym, that's been rectified, but those two doors are still a little problematic, but that's part of the two percent they're still working on. So overall, things are still going along very well. Um, the only glitch I have had is that the workmen who go in on that second shift to work in the classrooms tend to leave their debris behind. So, um, we've had discussions with the crew to make sure they're not leaving tools behind, they're not leaving debris behind, and we found some little pieces of riveting students have found. It's just not okay. They need to clean up their workspace when they come. So we've got great, um, cooperation with that, but I know that was a little troublesome to our teachers and to me, too. I did not want teachers or students to go into those areas that they leave at the end of the day that are set up in the morning, and then they have to be set up, so. But I have to say, overall, things are going along really well, and I managed to finish two percent, two percent to be done, but it's happening. Any questions?
Dawn.
Thank you.
Dawn? No? No? Thank you.
And I know at some point, like in January, we're gonna- we'll plan an open house for the community, so if we can come in and see. Probably on a Saturday, is that what you're thinking?
Well, we can certainly look at it. I know, um, I talked to Kathy about it as well, so we'll come up with a, probably two dates or so, which I don't know.
Good.
But we will have that open house.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next we have, uh, the approval of the minutes from October tenth and the twenty-fourth. We'll take one at a time, so October tenth.
Kathy, you did these? Snows, there's a couple of favorable acronyms on Hope's presentation. I thought maybe...
You thought I did my own?
Yeah. I didn't read them, but sure.
I work for her, I have to do that.
You're usually so agnostic, I was just...
Move that we approve the minutes of October tenth.
Second.
Motion by Dawn, second by Nicole. Any further discussion?
I didn't have any questions.
Nope. All right, Dawn?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, motion passed, so...
I didn't have to read them.
You should. They're pretty good. All right, now October twenty-fourth.
Make motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Nicole, second by Dawn. Any other discussion? Dawn?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. All right, moving on. Next is the report of the Superintendent, Mr. Borger.
So in the packet, on page eight, is the Personnel Summary Report. It's pretty sparse, and actually, the recess monitor listed for Casey Coombs has resigned, so, um, that's an opening currently, or possibly a long-term study going there. And we did have a hire at Quasnet School, Stephen Franco's a paraprofessional. He replaced Maureen Paxton, he retired on August second, I think? October, sorry, yes. The enrollment page is page nine, I believe, so four hundred and seven students at Coombs, five hundred students at the Quasnet School, two fifty-one at the middle school, four sixty-eight at the high school, for a total of sixteen twenty-six, and we have forty-three students at Cape Tech. Then the first report you have is from the Coombs School, Principal Paula Bell, who's here, and I just wanna go over the acknowledgements. There is an article that'll appear in Friday's encyclopedia, probably over there, so I don't wanna repeat myself on some of those, but definitely the acknowledgements. So thank you to the Mashpee Fire Department and Lieutenant Mike Eball for the visits to grade one and grade two classrooms to discuss fire safety and for providing walking field trips to the fire station for our kindergarten students. Thank you to Janet Wright and her volunteers who have begun the Read to Me Volunteer Program for the preschool. A great school-wide assembly presented by Tony Memmel, singer-songwriter, speaker, clinician, and composer, was enjoyed by everyone. Thank you to Katie Martin, our STEM teacher at the Coombs School. She has organized, I think it's the third year of the United States Coast Guard, um, coming in and actually teaching and connecting STEM learning to their work. Thank you to Denise Fronias, she is the CFCE Coordinator for Mashpee. She donated copies of Making Something Beautiful, a book that was read in the classrooms as a jumpstart for the read for the Record Day. And thank you to Colleen Terrell, one of our Directors of Instructional Technology, who created the Making Something Beautiful video that was presenting different KCC staff members reading the story, I recall. And then acknowledging that the before and after-school programs at the Coombs School, there are eleven offerings and a hundred and thirty-eight students participating. And then there's a write-up about their, um, Read-A-Thon event that you can read, that's also in the newspaper or something. Any other things you'd like to add, Mr. Bell?
No, I think that was- that was great. I ju- I just would like to- want me to come up here?
Sure. And if any of you have questions, now we could...
Good evening. I did want to acknowledge Denise Fronias, who is our CFCE Coordinator for Mashpee, but she is housed two days a week for office hours at our school. But because of her passion for what she's doing and her past experience as a teacher and administrator, she's actually become more of a resource for us within our own school as we're looking at our early childhood program. She's taken on this role very seriously. I know she only has a limited set of hours that her grant covers her, but she actually goes far beyond that. She's meeting with teachers, she's meeting with parents in our building, makes herself available, so it's- it's been a position that's been there for a while, but one that's really gone beyond the borders of what her expectations are. She's just been super helpful in, as we're going through our QRIS, um, status for...
What's QRIS?
QRIS is the- is the Quality Rating Scale for, um, early childhood programs.
Oh, okay.
Kinda like the old NIAID where, um, it's put through EEC where we are going...
You're using acronyms as verbs.
Yeah. So sorry. But the early childhood, um, aspect of does it is what the ones that have credited us, so...
You can't even stop yourself.
I'm so- acronyms everywhere, I'm just- needless to say, what she is doing is she's giving- lending us her expertise as we kind of navigate our next level of, um, in the status of early childhood education in our schools.
There you go. A whole sentence.
So grateful. We're really sorry.
So what does this- what does CFC stand for?
Collaborative Family and Community Engagement.
I think I found it at the letters in the right order.
Okay.
Basically, she's a resource for families as developmental resources, questions...
But funded by whom?
It's a grant.
Oh, this is the gr- okay, gotcha.
Right, which we share with Falmouth, actually.
We've had for years.
Yes. Well, we used to have our own very small place, but it made more sense to merge with Falmouth, and this was like the second or third year.
This is the second.
Second year of a merged partnership.
Oh, cool.
And just to add about Denise Fronias, she was a teacher in Mashpee when I first came on board for quite a few years, then went the path of becoming certified as a principal, so she left the district, and she's now a retired principal who has come back, and her years were spent at the Coombs School as a teacher, so it's kind of a nice- nice opportunity for us and hopefully for her, too.
We had a great partnership, so I just wanted to acknowledge her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you leave, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So when I look at overall enrollment at Casey Coombs, um, obviously it's down year over year. And in particular, it's- looks like it's down about twenty-five students between first and...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the beginning of your question.
Overall enrollment at Casey Coombs, year over year is down. It's about twenty-five students less in first and second grade. Any sense of what's driving that?
Well, we first of all- so first of all, we have our bubble year. Our first grade is, we have seven classrooms of first graders. That was our- our bubble year. We also had, I think, we've hired numbers last year with our second grade, so with them gone, there's- there's a loss of numbers for last year's second grade. Our kindergarten is- is down, and I think that's what the trend was looking at. However, our preschool, um, are actually, numbers are up.
Well, they're ninety-seven versus ninety-three.
Well, we added a- and we added another session. We added the four-year-old session. We were at three, um, sessions last year.
Okay.
And we have four this year.
But the total only went up by four.
That is true, yes. The total did go up, you're absolutely right.
By four?
By four.
But you added another session.
Correct, to account for class size.
Okay, to even it out.
Basically, we're increasing the four-year-old program and the three-year-old program, we reduced a little bit session-wise, options.
Right.
Because there were four-year-olds who didn't get in the prior year, and we didn't want that to happen again.
Okay, but the three-year-olds, if I remember correctly, are only those that qualify, correct? For disabilities?
So, so, yeah, those that come in for, um, early intervention or are identified as needing, um, special education, those- those children are automatically in our program. And then we have regular students that offset that program, but it is limited space for them, different from our pre-K.
Okay. So this decrease was no surprise for you?
No.
Okay.
And I think that's where the trend is.
All right. Thank you.
I'm not sure what happened with that first grade and the why of that year, but that just seems to be an anomaly, so...
All right, thank you.
So next, we have the report of the Quasnet School, and Principal Mary Kate O'Brien is here. Five hundred and one students, although I think on the master sheet, I just read off as five hundred, so I'm not sure where the... Anyway, close enough. And her acknowledgements are thank you to Stacy Shackle, Deputy Sean Cahill, and Counselor Greta McHugh for facilitating the Botfin Life Skills Program for parents, guardians, and caregivers. It was a- it's an evidence-based program that provides strategies for raising healthy children. This was the second time this was offered. This was totally underwritten by the Kiwanis, I believe. It was a fourteen-hundred-dollar gift from the Kiwanis. And, um, most of the- you can talk more about the attendance. It was four separate Monday nights, I believe, and meal- food was provided.
Well, food was provided by, um, yes, Mr. Stickley, Gus Stickley provided the food. It was all, as Mrs. Superintendent Ford shared, was all underwritten by the Kiwanis of Mashpee. And it's really in an effort to help fight opioid crisis and other unhealthy behaviors, and to give parents strategies to raise healthy students, help healthy children. So it- and it's wonderful to be able to present this to families based on, um, the counseling perspective, a law enforcement perspective, and then the health perspective of the nurse. So it's- it's really a wonderful opportunity, and we also provide babysitting. We've had high school students come from the National Honor Society to help with babysitting. Quasnet students who are on the Honor Society come also, and, um, Mrs. Abchess was very instrumental in helping with that and Mrs. Amory with the babysitting, so it was great.
And the other acknowledgements that she has is the thanking the Quasnet School PTO for organizing a wonderful book fair for students, parents, and staff, and for facilitating the Crazy Hat Bingo Night, which is a great family event. Thank you to Gus Stickley, who provided the- prepared the breakfast for three days of the book fair. And then last Friday was the Veterans Assembly and Luncheon at the Quasnet School. And the group or the staff members who work on that, it's an annual event, um, so to acknowledge and thank Ellie Pedano, Elena Boyd, Chris Hill, Teresa Arsenal, Colleen Blunt, Elizabeth Wonder, and Jackie Stiles for their efforts at this event, and also Lauren Richards for guiding students and creating patriotic artwork to add to the festivities, and also again to Gus Stickley for preparing delicious luncheon and treats for the guests. And finally, Principal Brian would like to thank Chief War and Officer Aaron Van Heisen for serving as the emcee for the assembly. So that's a wonderful event. If you've never been able to attend, I know that Mr. Santos was there, so...
It's great every year.
It's great. And then the highlight that she has in her report talks about a sensory walk that they have created. It's down towards the fifth-grade hallway. I have that right up in the- for the newspaper, but it's really a great strategy and tool for students to sort of be able to refocus and- and aid their learning better. So it's an opportunity for them to take a break, but it's very scripted, sort of, in terms of what they do. So we're grateful for that. Would you like to add?
If I could just share one other thing. We had so many families who came and participated in that book fair event, and as a result of all of those, um, books that were sold and the money raised by the PTO, approximately five thousand dollars in books went into every classroom here at Quasnet School. So those, the effort of our PTO, but also the support of all our families in buying those books makes a huge difference for our classrooms and our students. So I can't thank them enough for all of their support. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And the next report is that of the Mashpee Middle High School. Principal Val Stracci is here. Seven hundred and nineteen is the total number of students who attend the school. He'd like to acknowledge the CTE Department for hosting the Cape Cod STEM Network Tour and Luncheon during the first annual STEM Week. That was the Blue Economy and the Workforce Team that was there. Uh, thank you to Mr. Torianos, music teacher, and Ms. Keller for hosting the Fall Coffee House Night, and it was students and staff who performed for the audience. And thank you to staff and parents who volunteered for the Grade Eight Science Field Trip to the Boston Museum of Science. And then he has some highlights that are also in my article, but particularly with Amanda Howe. She was recognized as a New England Patriot STEM Teacher of the Year finalist, and Raytheon donated a thousand dollars to the school that will be used to support some of the programs that Amanda does with our students. And also, I think I will acknowledge Senior Radia Jacobson. Her senior project was hosting and planning the Fourth Annual New Student Breakfast, and there were over thirty students who attended, and the Pro Start Program provided the breakfast. But what's nice about that is when you are a new student to a school, when you see everyone who's new, you don't feel so alone, when you recognize that, wow, there's a bunch of us, and that's always a great experience. So, any questions for Principal Val Stracci?
Um, I don't understand why his- what's the difference between the totals on his report and what's published on the enrollment sheet?
It's not totaled on enrollment sheet, but it's two fifty-one for grades seven and eight, which does match his report, and then four sixty-eight is grades nine through twelve.
Okay. Oh, I see.
I don't know, we've never totaled which...
Okay, the other one, it says total, but...
I know, but it's total for just the high school.
Just the high school, okay. All right, thank you. Hey, Mark, I, um, wanted to ask, we never circled back about what happened with the senior prom or the prom or the homecoming. And I, um, I just wanted to say thanks to you and your- and the volunteers and everyone who made it so that we could enable everybody who wanted to go, go, and it was, we had a football game going on, and you had tons of other stuff, and you were away at a conference, but I just wanted to say that, um, I heard from a couple of families that they were really pleased that we figured out a way to resolve that at what I thought was pretty last minute, and so...
It was good teamwork, so...
Yeah. So I don't think it ever came up here, so I just wanted to make sure. I said thanks.
The next report is from Dr. Curly for the Special Education Department, and I know that she- I believe you had your first CPAC meeting last week. These were submitted, some of the verbs are off-terms because they were submitted in advance of Gail on vacation, so, um, I don't know if you wanna comment or share anything about the first CPAC meeting on basic rates. Was it well-attended?
Uh, there were two people.
Not well-attended. We have to work on how to improve that. And we've talked about whether to merge with some of the other local districts and bring in some speakers that would attract a larger audience, so that's probably something I will go over. There's a little write-up that you can read from, um, Dr. Curly about disability types, and then the Act of IUP is two hundred and eighty-one is what she is showing here before. And if anyone has questions for Dr. Curly?
So I guess the only question I would have, and this could also, for both of you, is it looks like we went up one out of district. Was this anticipated, like, or is this something that, budget-wise, I guess is, you know, as long as the kids can take care of, budget-wise, is this something that we anticipated for?
Well, we always anticipate, you know, when I build my bu- when we build the budget, I sit with, um, Dr. Curly, and we, um, we determine there's so many kids that we know that are going out, guaranteed going out, let's say, in FY twenty, so we count those, and then we look at, um, last, this current budget, there was another half a million, but you don't wanna put that into the budget because it would totally impact the budget. And, um, so what we do is we try to take a look at, well, we'll- we won't put a half a million, but we'll put some, I don't wanna call it a cushion, but we have to, we know that there are gonna be possible kids going out, so we do put that in there, we do take that, uh, we do consider that...
Okay.
When building the budget. I was gonna hit that tonight, so it's a, uh, we're fine. We did have an additional one go out, but we're still okay with it. And it's, you know, I don't- it's very fluent, and, um, Dr. Curly, you can jump in if I don't cover something. Uh, it's very fluent. We may have a kid age out, we may have someone move to another community, which we have, I know we had one of those, so it- it's very fluent.
Yep.
So, but we're- we're fine right now.
Okay.
Every month, every month I get by, I go, you know, thank you.
All right, good.
Dr. Curly?
Good job.
Thank you.
It is very fluid.
Pardon me?
It's very fluid.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
So next, you have the report of our Athletic Director, Matt Triverry, and just to highlight that we had, uh, four teams who, uh, made it to postseason play, which is our varsity football, girls soccer, boys soccer, and golf. And to highlight, boys golf finished fourth in the Division Three South Cape Cod. Colin Spencer, who I think is only ninth or eighth grade, anyway, won, he won the South Shore League Individual Title, and Kyle Puchel finished second. And, um, so kudos to all of our fall athletes, student athletes. Does anyone have any questions on anything?
No.
Oh, yes.
I just wanted to add that Coach Triverry received the Eastern Massachusetts Officials' Association Coach of the Year Award, so I think it's tomorrow night he'll be receiving his award in up in Abington, of all places. But it was a ma- it was a great award. They- head of the Officials' Association came down and gave it to him in front of the team, so it was really a cool moment. It was all about sportsmanship of the team and the coaching staff, which is speaks wise to the class in that building.
Congratulations to him.
Do you know the result of the Abington Cohasset? Was that the next one?
Cohasset beat them handled. So Cohasset will play Saint Mary's for a trip to July.
One other question I have was, I think when we were at Oktoberfest, Stephanie Sores had told me the date of the science fair, and, uh, I'm a little concerned that it's November and we haven't sort of reached out about that date. I haven't seen, maybe I haven't seen anything go out of it because I don't have a high school kid, but, um, I thought we were gonna request judges and things like that, and I know that, working for a science agency, we usually get a pretty, um, big heads up on the Falmouth Science Fair when you're requesting judges and things like that, so I just, I hope we send something out shortly or soon. I thought it was early January.
I was at a department head meeting this morning. I know you were taking care of another situation where they were- it was all organized and well-laid out, so I don't know who the judges are, I can't give you that, but...
The date, the date I had, I believe it's January fifteenth.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Hoffenstadt had it all, sort of, and they had a ton of kids sign up, which they were super psyched about, uh, because it's...
They did meet, they did meet with a team, a number of, um, science professionals that came in two days ago to meet with all of them at the school to help coordinate, so I'm not sure if I can follow.
I didn't get invited. No, I don't, I don't think it's January fifteenth.
I know, I was trying not to go there.
That's an instrument night.
Okay, January fifteenth.
I'll double check.
There was something that Mr. Hoffenstadt just recently, it was a meeting for kids and projects, I just saw an email on that, but I can't find it.
I mean, you probably have people at your work, too, that would be interested.
Possibly.
They're working with a, aren't we bringing in...
Yes, we received a grant, um, from the state agencies that do it, so we're gonna be working with them throughout the process to kind of organize it all.
So it may be that we're not soliciting in the same way that we may have in the past because through this grant, they're getting trained in how to do all of the, like, coordination of it, but also, I think some of their people might, so I don't wanna say the wrong thing because who knows if I'm right or not.
Yeah, just let me know what's going on. Yeah, we'd appreciate that. Thank you.
I might have missed it, but did we say anything about tech night tomorrow?
Uh, we did not say anything about that tomorrow, so we're gonna share that. That's at six-thirty, isn't it?
I believe it's six-thirty.
Six-thirty. Here, I can tell you.
Yeah, it's six to seven.
So six to seven-thirty tomorrow night here at this library. Parents are invited to, or community members, you don't have to be a parent, to bring any of your... of your devices to sort of learn from the experts, including Mr. Santos and our two directors of instructional technology on the different apps available and how you can regulate and monitor the use of, your child's use of technology, all the devices. So, it should be pretty informative. I don't know if you would like to add anything to that.
I pretty much covered it. If you want to know more, come.
And are the kids allowed to be here, or is it just parents?
It's parents.
Yeah, because we don't want...
We want the kids to figure it out.
They already know.
Parents, guardians, and caregivers.
Thank you. All right. Does anybody have any questions about anything? All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is the report of the business manager, Mr. Polk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First order of business, from the previous meeting, I need a vote on the transfers that were presented at the last meeting. And it's just basically to clean up some of the minuses in the budget. So, request a vote on...
I'm sorry, what page was that?
Transfer nineteen dash one.
Number eight.
I move to approve the budget transfer request.
Nineteen oh one.
Second.
Motion by the folks, second by Don. Another discussion? All right, Don, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the FY nineteen budget, one of the areas that I was going to hit, I hit earlier, a discussion on out of districts, because, you know, those out of districts are the ones that can, you know, really be a budget buster, if you don't watch them carefully. We've been fortunate in the past years, as we are this year, seeing things right now, go month to month, they're fine. The other piece that I wanted to hit tonight before I move on is the transportation. If you turn to page twenty-five, you'll notice in the sped transportation that we, it looks like we still have a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars left. That's, we're just getting our, the out of district kids, the ones that go outside Mashpee. So, that will be incumbent shortly, and it will be about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to transport them. So, there will be a balance, but again, it's very fluent. Somebody could move in when we send it, when we send a child out, it's not only the tuition, but it's also transportation. At this point, I'll entertain any questions in the FY nineteen budget.
Don?
No, I looked, I didn't have any questions.
I'm also, too. Thank you, Paul.
Moving on, I'm going to move on next to the...
Grants?
The grants, which is on page, it looks like thirty-eight. You can see from past years, the grants have dwindled. Title one, ninety-four, one forty-two, the other two major grants, those are entitlement grants. They're part of No Child Left Behind, if you remember that. So, we are receiving funds at this time. They've all been approved. Every grant that you see here has been approved. And I don't know if there's any other questions right now on the grants.
No, sir.
I don't have any more.
Moving on to the revolving accounts. And those are pretty much self-explanatory, except for school choice. And if you turn to page forty, there's your explanation of school choice, there was no change from the previous one. So, everything, everything is being charged against the budget as requested. At the, at the end of the year, we'll determine what we have to move to cover and close out the budget. Any questions on any of the revolving accounts?
That's not a question on the account, but what does, what does tie out mean? The last line of the school choice?
Oh, that ties out to munis.
What was that?
It ties out to our software. I can, I can call that...
It's just the balance?
Yeah, it's just the balance.
Okay.
Because I want, you know, because I'm basically tracking not only an FY eighteen balance that I brought forward, the expenditures that we did have over the summer. And then you'll notice the balance of eighteen, it's five hundred and eighty-two thousand eight oh seven. You'll notice that FY nineteen receipts, two hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and six. That's just part of it. That's the FY, I want to make sure I say that, the FY nineteen coming in, that will be expended next year, which would be five hundred, I believe, five hundred thousand, roughly.
Okay.
And the last piece that, at the request of the committee, quarterly, the high school balances, student activity accounts. I just want to point out that these are just the balances, as the principal oversees these accounts. The, if you notice a class of two thousand and one in your, in the policy, that any grant, any, I'm sorry, any class of two thousand, class funds will be closed out after two years. I'm cutting these, these people a little slack because we just sent out letters, so I am giving them a chance to withdraw from our student activity account. They have to move to their own account in the local bank. So, it would be like, who's coming up this year? Two thousand and fifteen is coming up for the class reunion, which is at seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. They can take that and apply it to their first class reunion. But the relevant is doing a lot of money. They make a moment down and use it, they usually use it when they class reunion, but it can't stay in the student activity. If they don't take it, we're going to move it.
Yeah.
Because there's a policy in this.
Yeah, so the, so in the future, ideally, you're saying there would, you said after two years they have to post it? So, really, there would only be the current four years back to...
Well, it would be the current plus two that.
Yeah, okay.
And that was policy, that was the policy.
I thought I saw some, I can't find it now, but yeah, there, how was there a negative balance for somebody?
I'd have to have the, I'd have to check on that.
I was wondering about that when I reviewed this earlier.
You're not supposed to run a negative balance. Now, put it in something that there are funds coming in, they have not, they have not been posted, which happens very commonly, you know, with big, with big discounts across. And it's sixty-nine dollars, maybe two cents, I'm sure. But then, are there any other questions on the balance sheet of the high school student activity?
I have one more. So, the, and the, is interest what I think it is?
It's interest, I, again, there's two accounts, there's the, you've got the agency account, etc., and the checking account.
So, so it just, it's been separately...
It's just been accumulated over, over a period of time.
And that's just discretionary money that gets spent by the school, or...
I don't know if it's discretion. It's going to be spent on students.
Oh, I assume so.
Yeah. It could be that, at the end of the year, it could be distributed, you know...
Equitably, or, okay. Or proportionally?
Yeah, proportionally.
Okay.
And if, you know, we give them, as I said, I'm cutting them, giving them a little, to take the money that's out of the student activity. But now, we have to just say, we're going to take those accounts and put it into a student activity general account and determine what we have to do with it. And that for... Any other questions? I have to go back and look, go back to the... Most likely, you just end up on, for the month. If he's a monthly balance, yes. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. All right, so next on the agenda, we have the student representative. Thank you for joining us.
So, last Friday at Dennis Yarmouth High School, there was a leadership summit, and students from Mashpee, DY, Sturgis, and Barnstable went, and they developed skills like confidence in their leadership. And we heard from speakers that work with Governor Baker and Senator Seer, as well as workshops with the Independence House. Winter sports are starting back up again. The fall sports have concluded, and I wanted to shout out girls varsity soccer, who made it through this year by making it to the second round of state tournament for the first time in twelve years. And football, as well as boys and girls soccer, made it to state tournament. Term one has quickly come to an end, and we are heavily into term two. It came up so quickly, but we're ready for it. All clubs and classes, grade seven through twelve, have begun fundraisers, community service, and these clubs and classes have been working back, working hard to give back. Students are beginning to plan for the Mashpee High School Science and Engineering Fair, which is to be held on January fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. The class of two thousand and nineteen will be having Christmas tree sales, which will begin the weekend of December first at Smithy's at the library. Students attended the twenty eighteen Mass STEM Summit in Worcester, Massachusetts today. All Cape auditions were held today for corps, band, and string students at Falmouth High School. National Auto Society is sponsoring their fall Cape Cod Healthcare Blood Drive on Friday, November thirtieth, from eight to twelve P.M. School to career students are firming up their internship, which will begin on January twenty-eighth. National Middle High School students are looking forward to the upcoming break and reflecting their kindness, including to others. And the student community of National Middle High School would like to extend their sincere wishes for a happy, healthy, and peaceful holiday weekend to all of you in your families. Thank you.
Welcome to stay with us for a souvenir if you'd like, otherwise, goodnight. All right, moving on, we have under specifically unassigned unfinished business, consolidating school committee meetings, which we have, everybody has, again, out of our current meeting schedule in front of you. I know last meeting, when this was brought up, again, we kind of talked about the idea of combining the March meetings, April, and June specifically. Obviously, those weren't set in stone, but if anybody else has any other thoughts on those or any other dates? We're set to vote on this tonight, so we can go ahead and do that, if everybody's comfortable with the set dates or other dates. And now, Paul, did you have any feedback on those specific meeting dates that we had picked? As far as if, if it was done, it would have any impact on, on any kind of budget meeting? We didn't think so, we want to make sure. Also, I guess the other decision to be made would be, which date would we combine it to, or move it to another date? So, for instance, if we're in March, we pick the six twenty, or another date?
I would recommend that we pick one of the existing dates, because I also have collaborative meetings on Wednesdays, so I'm committed to, they meet on the second Wednesday, so I wouldn't want to miss all of those.
What changes?
Why not June? I think June nineteenth, that's...
That's already kind of set, you can set it.
So, why, why would we not do June fifteenth?
Just because that's the last meeting we have. Even day, it really doesn't matter, because I can give you a projection on, on June fifteenth. And by that time, the principal is, if he has spent it, well, it's over, you know? You oversold it this year, then what's last year? Even if you look at, even if you go down through the, through the budget actually, you see that, you know, we start to see that the bulk of the year, the spending, the principal is spending, which it should be. By November December, then you should have, you know, a few more charges, the big items that they're giving, ones that have just come through. Really doesn't matter, I can, because I would have good, good projections on what we're going to do. I mean, even one, even seven days before that or something, you're going to want to know what we're going to have to move from, from the budget. And because this year, we coached it differently, we have, we're charging, we're looking to the budget, and what we might have to back, what we might have to back out. And what we don't back out, you know, what I do it, really doesn't matter what date that we're going to have to transfer, just transfer that money.
Yeah, I'm sure.
No, fifteenth, fifteenth of July, by law, sometimes, you know, by law. But I'm going to, I'll have a pretty good handle on what we have to transfer, by either one of those dates.
I do want to remind everybody, too, that for whatever reason, we do need another meeting at some point for any time, this, this happens all the time anyway, we just have to meet to be posted requirements to notify the public. We can add an additional meeting at any time.
We can just use the, in all of those, I'm not emotionally motivated, but it means to, March, the March sixth, April, to April fourth, June, September, October, December.
Motion by Don.
My second.
Second by Nicole. Any other discussion on that? There are none. Don, are you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes?
So, will that impact how you schedule the July meeting, the first one of next? Okay.
We do, in May, in May, yeah, that's true. Anyway, yeah, we're going on it.
Aren't you glad you said so?
All right. Our next item is, uh, tuition waiver for, uh, grade 12 students, A.D. All right, motion to, uh, for the tuition waiver for grade 12 student, A.D.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nicole, second by Don. Any discussion? Don?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Thank you. All right. Next is, uh, school start time implementation update. Uh, this was through goals from Mr. Mars and Ms. Bartlett. So, whoever's going to discuss?
So what you have as a handout is sort of an overview that we keep adding to as we've had the meetings and you can see that we have, we've had a meeting to discuss before and after school care, we've talked about the school day schedule that included breakfast and lunch and also the staff workdays, work schedules. We've had a meeting to discuss the sports schedules for practice and games, we've met with DPW for custodian work schedules and how it impacts any maintenance. We had a meeting just yesterday with transportation, which was with the K-Cod Club, and so that's sort of where we're at. And one of the somewhat significant recommendations that came out of yesterday's meeting was, um, to consider having the Mashpee Middle High School's start time instead of it being 8:30 with a 3 o'clock end, changing it to 8:20 with a 2:50 p.m. end. So it's a 10-minute difference, but it's, really was considered very tight to be able to do the dismissal run where high schoolers are getting out at 3:00 and these elementary students need to be picked up at 3:35. That's tight between loading the buses up there, which is about a five to six-minute process, as well as what Boustrot you said today, till the buses are off the campus. But then you have the light and, um, so as a way to sort of keep elementary with the plan, but rectify that, to make it match a little bit more with this, the committee was going to go with that recommendation, the, not the committee, the, the group that met about school start time as a potential change, um, for you to consider. It doesn't have to be anything, I mean, obviously, it's not going to be voted on today. So what you have here as well is a summary of each of the, um, meetings. And one of the things, the Boys and Girls Club, as well as the Rec Department, is able to, um, accommodate a before-school program for elementary students. The Boys and Girls Club, it would be part of the annual fee, so it would not be an additional cost to families, and we would provide a bus that would go in, not all the way down to the Boys and Girls Club, but just past the Police Department to pick up any students that were having before-school care there and then loop back out and come to school. The Rec Department is able to expand their programming if needed. And, um, I did follow up with the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe and Roxanne, who is not here today, Roxanne Brown, is going to, um, look into it again in terms of really, we wanted there to be an option for all tribal families to drop off their children at the tribal government center, whether it was a cultural mourning program or just childcare and whether there was a small fee involved to cover the cost of someone supervising them. Um, she's going to revisit that with, um, her, her people. And that was also an option where we would have a bus stop at the tribal government center, so, um, to help facilitate that. One of the buses already going down there, so we'll see. I'm waiting to hear back whether Roxanne is successful, because we are going to send a hard copy letter to all current pre-K to 5 families with what the options are to sort of get a better feel. We, I do want to do that in December to help with budgeting for, I know Ruth Provost was looking for that information by January when she does her work, so, um, that's where that is with before-school care and, um, and summarize there. Then we had the meeting that had to do with schools, school day schedules, you can see the information there. If the high school is going to begin their day at 8:20, we would want the buses dropping off at 8 o'clock, which is the same 20-minute relationship that they have now. A 7:30 start time, the buses unload at 7:10. I don't want buses picking up kids too early. In my perfect world, they'd all roll in at 8:00 and unload. That gives them enough time to do their elementary runs. And, um, so homerooms would be at 8:20. We have a lunch schedule, it might be adjusted slightly based on this last change. Um, the teacher workday, we have worked that out, although with this 8:20 change, it might be adjusted by 10 minutes at the high school. Uh, we've worked out how half-days will be handled for faculty and then the Monday meetings, most, and we've seemed to settle on, they will be home meetings for staff rather than, um, after-school, after-workday meetings on Mondays. And we've talked about the late bus and figured that out with the collaborative as well. The next section flows all of the sports, which, um, A.D. Traveri did a lot of work on and there's really not going to be a huge impact on people, students leaving early. He has the away games, those schools have agreed to a 4:30 start instead of a 4 o'clock start, so that does allow us to leave a little later and our home games would be a 4 o'clock start. He's still supposed to get some more additional information for us. We asked him to, you know, pick a, an imaginary, I asked him to pick an imaginary student athlete who does football, basketball, and baseball and compare the current year with when they would leave early to the next year to see if they're, what the difference in minutes would be and also to do a middle school student that way as well. So you can see all departure times, game times for next year are here.
So if I could stop you there, one second. If I'm reading this correctly, um, it looks like there's only five, five opponents that they would even, if we moved it to 2:50 early, you know, 2:50 at least time.
Right.
There are only five opponents that they would even have to leave early for, two of which is only five minutes. The rest is 20 minutes and 35 minutes.
Well, like, well, Hull.
Yeah.
He has them leaving at 2:15.
Mm-hmm.
Which is.
But I just want to, because I know, just to clarify for people that aren't reading this document or at home watching or that were kind of, because there was a lot of concern about students having to leave early for sports. There are a lot of things on this page and the only thing I see leaving early for are really three items, the other two are five minutes.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's a testament to Matt.
Yeah.
To Matt adjusting those game start times. So if these, these differentials are identical to what they are this year.
Yeah.
Because the games started a half hour earlier. And so now that we've shifted the games back a half hour, our kids are going to be departing at the same time.
Yeah, okay, good.
Same loss of minutes.
Same loss of time that they have normally.
Oh, glad to see that work out. Thank you.
So, is this less comprehensive of all the away games? Because it seems to me that some of our away games this year are a lot farther.
Well, in terms of football, this year, there were a couple that were outliers. I know there's one we're not doing that again with, I don't know about the St. Mary one.
Yes, so this year's been kind of a unique one in the fact that it was really difficult to get non-league games scheduled, that they don't, you know, when you've had a lot of success like the program has had, it's harder to get non-league games that are highly competitive. So unfortunately, this year, we had a couple of further trips early on in the year.
And we don't anticipate that next year.
Well, these are the, the opponents and times for next year.
For 1920.
These aren't hypothetical, these are actual.
Okay, and this is the complete list?
Yes.
Uh, there's some notes on that, I should number these pages, but on the next page, and one of the concerns Mark, uh, not Mark, Matt Traveri had was bus drivers for athletic trips, but the collaborative confirmed for us that they don't use our route drivers for those athletic trips, they have other drivers unless it's a very late leaving, like a football bus is obviously later in the day, so that's not a problem for having bus drivers that need to drive at the same time or still doing our routes and, um, yeah.
So what, what time would the earliest bus pickup be?
So that, we have not confirmed that part of the start of the route, but I don't want it to be in, you know, 7:30 in order to get there at 8:00 would be tight, it might be more like a 7:20. There's a couple of far routes or far distance travel, but, um, we're going to look at that, one of the, which when we get to that part in transportation, I'll kind of talk a little bit about that. If I flip, I don't forget ourselves. Right, and that's on there. Yeah.
Okay, so that, that hasn't happened yet.
October 30th, we met with Brad Tripp and DPW Director Kathy Laurent, and they shared their information. Everyone across the district in terms of day custodians work on the same shift, so it doesn't matter what school you're at, doesn't currently as well, so they anticipate day custodians starting at 7:15, second shift custodians at 3:15. There was a Monday thing where now that we do our staff meetings, um, in the schools on a Monday morning, that there might need to be, at the high school, um, one of their crew members who swings by to disarm and raise the gates in between the CAF and the academic wing, they put that gate down, so that might be something that they said, they often swing by in the morning anyway that they would do. And also whether they may need to give the Rec Department some codes so that they can, you know, disarm the Coombs School or this school at 7:00 because the custodian doesn't come onboard until 7:15, when only that's been. But there was no contractual issues related to this. And then yesterday was the meeting with the collaborative on transportation, that's on the back page. We, um, currently have 20 buses available to us, but we only use 15.
If you used all 20 buses, if one broke down, you'd be in trouble. And you, you don't forget your, your sports trips too.
Right. So we have, for this year, we have 14 buses used on the MMHS run, 15 buses on the Coombs and Quash run. So we were saying for next year, we will add a 15th bus to the middle high school run to shorten some of the routes. We also are, for 1920, we'll have eight buses dropping off and picking up at Quashnet while the other seven are dropping off and picking up at Coombs. That's going back to a model we used many years ago, so hopefully it will still work. Um, for 1920, bus drop-offs at MMHS will be at 8:00 and the bus drop-offs for the elementary will be, will be between the 8:50 to 9:00 a.m. timeframe. The late bus at the MMHS will be at 3:35 and the late bus at Quash will be at 4:20. In January is when Kathy's going to work with Lisa at the collaborative, and what's Lisa's last name again?
Stobak.
Stobak. They are going to develop the routes in January, they're going to meet with the drivers in February, so each driver can review the route for safety and they know the stops well. And then in April, we're going to publish the bus stops and the times for 1920, well in advance, um, for everyone to consider. We did talk about considering the elimination of the bus door side pickup and drop-off for MMHS, but at that time, we had this conversation, we were still dealing with like a 35-minute turnaround, we may not need to do that. Other districts don't do that, but what that means is you never have to walk in front, you know, you get off if you live on that side.
Door side.
And otherwise, you come on a different bus who lets you off on that side, so.
We do all pickups on door side.
Door side. We have had parents in the past who have wanted it different because it, in some cases, requires your child to do a loop and then come back till they can get off. But, um, that's a possibility to, to look at for the older students. And then one of the recommendations too, that some of the districts have had, is establish a district transportation safety committee, where right now, when we have challenges or questions or anything, it all flows to Kathy. And then we have conversations, but maybe there should be a process, a system put in place for anyone who wants a different stop, who has a complaint, so that we, we sort of are more collaborative decision-maker about that. So, um, that's something we want to. And that is where we are at for school start time. The only meetings that we show as remaining is the after-school programs, um, which is working with the Rec Department and the two principals, and there's an unknown factor there, because we don't know if teachers with a change in their work schedule are going to want to participate in that, and we'll probably end up surveying teachers to find out, because if in fact they don't choose to, we may have to look for other sources of, um, people who want to do programs for our students. And then medication adjustments is a meeting with the nurses, that's going to be a very quick minor, I don't see that as a huge issue. So I don't know if you have other ideas of topics, but I think we're getting a pretty good picture of where we'll be at. And the idea is to finalize everything so that we can clearly communicate as early as we're doing with the bus routes, we want everybody to know everything they need to know, parents, particularly.
Patty, where is the specific information about, is this, is, it would be nice if these were numbered.
I am going to number them.
So is the, um, school day, is that this one?
School day schedules.
This is these two?
So these two started with flowing sort of the student day and then it just merged, and so we, we took two meetings and merged them in, because we actually had Mary Stickley here with that, with us at that meeting as well. And so the first part is more of the student focus of the day, and then the second chart on the next page is more of a adult focus in terms of what the schedule would look like for them. Although the early release times, that does impact students, it would be 11:50 at the high school for the 7 through 12 and 12:30 at the elementary schools on half-days.
That's a half-day, for the record. Something after 12 is what I consider to be a half-day.
Or we could count, we could count hours and minutes.
Yes. As a parent.
As a parent.
When was it that you planned on presenting the entire recommendation to the committee? Or hopefully?
You mean for the 8:20?
I think, I think.
For everything.
I think you were going to kind of have a comprehend, like an implementation plan and then that was going to get, and I thought we talked about January?
It should be, I mean, I really would want to get that, um, piece of information from parents of pre-K to 5.
Yeah.
Just to know better planning there, but yes, absolutely, January would be a good time, because we're pretty well done with also the meetings.
Go back to work, hope I just mentioned it first. My recommendation would be the 20, because it should maybe be on the next agenda, um, only because I can't imagine it wouldn't pass, but you never know. And if you just stopped working for day 30 rather than day 20, the ability on a plan based on something has a path to it, so I would recommend that on the next agenda.
Yeah, so, um, I attended the, the before scare, the before-aftercare one, um, the sports ones and the transportation one. And I, at the transportation one, I mentioned that, or I guess I offered that we do have a 10-minute homeroom at the middle high school now, so technically classes would not be starting until 8:30, which is kind of the goal of the school start time change, but because we have that 10-minute, um, homeroom period, I thought, I mean, I personally am okay with it being an 8:20 start, um, which will, if it allows us to meet our busing and transportation needs and make everything fit without, you know, keeping costs even, which is what our goal was.
And I think we're still giving 50 minutes, 50 minutes of added time in the morning for a student compared to what it is now, so that's good.
Yeah.
I was very happy after that meeting because of the 10 minutes.
Me too.
I just find it interesting, it must, it's very challenging for the visit for middle high school. Everything starts at odd times, 11:54, 12:18, 14:40.
That is the life of the high school, right, Skyl?
Everything is at a weird time.
But you know it so well, Skyl.
We are consistently inconsistent. It seems like it would make a heck of a lot of sense.
Well, they're consistent with what, four minutes between classes?
Correct.
And you try to get equal, you have to have proper.
Can you do it with four minutes?
Yeah.
Time to spare. So what I understand is we do this in our high schools and then you go off to work and then you have meetings from 1:00 to 2:00 and 2:00 to 3:00 and 3:00 to 4:00 and 4:00 to 5:00.
Right, everything's blocked.
Yeah, exactly. This would be better.
Not where I work.
This is great, Patty, thanks for the summary.
Does anybody else have anything on that? One more on the, uh, rest of the working group update.
Can I ask, Mark, did I characterize that correctly? Is it a 10 minute, it says on this, there's 12 minutes.
It's a 12-minute homeroom.
12 minutes.
Yes.
Want to correct that.
And what, what's the purpose of that 12 minutes?
So 12 minutes is students are able to come in, kind of get ready for their day, have a check-in and check-out, have a small, um, number of students that are attached to a teacher and have loops throughout their time in middle school, so have the same teacher for 7th and 8th grade, and then have the same teacher for 9th through 12, so it helps us re. So it helps as we start to look to push down some advisory things, some just different educational pieces that we can't always fit into the day. And the feedback from staff has been very good. And the feedback from students has been very positive on it as well.
Can I add to that and what we do in home room? I'm a class officer and every Monday, every Monday in day seven, myself and the other three class officers, we make, we meet with our class advisor about like ways to get things done faster rather than just having two meetings a month that like the whole group go to. So we do that like twice a week. And then also, a lot of kids will do, like finish up homework assignments they didn't get the chance to do in home room. Or I'll go and print out assignments that I have to turn in throughout the day. Or talk to teachers or put something away in my locker. It's really just like a cleanup time before the day starts.
And part of the philosophy behind it as well, because they have a rotating schedule, we want the same person to see a student every morning to notice if there's any distress or anything that they need help with. Whereas, you know, that disconnect of not seeing Skylar every morning, which would be winning the lottery as a home room teacher.
Kind of going along with that too, as well as student too, with that continuity in the morning of always seeing, knowing where to go, you know, always seeing the same person.
Building relationships.
Have you seen an impact on tardies or?
That is under review. But the thing is that if a student is a few minutes tardy for school, they're not losing time for English, math, science, a core area of course.
Right.
If they missed a few minutes of a home room as opposed to that time of direct instruction.
However, we don't want them to miss any of it.
Correct.
That's right.
Thanks, Skylar.
Okay, so on the financial roadmap for fiscal planning, the next meeting of that group is November 20th at 10:00 a.m. I don't believe we've met since the last school committee meeting. The effectiveness and efficiency group is meeting on December 4th at 3:00. And we are working on the school committee handbook. We'll have the draft for review at that time. And the stakeholder communication plan working group is meeting on the 26th from 11:00 to 12:00. Mr. Gorman and Mrs. Bartlett. And we have several things we're reviewing at that meeting. I'm sorry, did I say, what did I say?
You said the 26th.
Oh, November.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Did I say December?
No.
No, he just said 26th.
I'm sorry.
No, I assumed it gave me 26th.
And December 26th, I will not be. I will not be meeting with the stakeholder communication group.
I wasn't thinking the same.
That's okay.
Sorry. I might work that.
We were going to, we actually, I'm going to share something else. Just a discussion with folks.
I think that's a carryover. Because that was on the agenda.
Last.
Last. Yeah, we did the, yeah.
Is there anything else you would want to add to those?
Didn't you have a meeting with the town manager?
I did, but we followed his own category. So yesterday, yes, yesterday, we, Dr. Hansken, myself and Mr. Funk went to have our preliminary budget meeting with the town manager. And present on the town side was Rodney Collins, Wayne Taylor, the assistant town manager, and Don Thayer, the finance director. And we basically went through the narrative. They were very appreciative of having the narrative. And basically, one of the questions the town manager had was related to the request that we have in the capital improvement program. And whether any of the items we were asking for in that area were also in our operating budget as a way, as a potential reduction. And I said that we had some of our technology in both places because we don't know at this point what the capital improvement program's going to give us. And based on the past few years of being 30,000, there is money in there for that. We talked about that. He didn't really give us an indication. I do think he thought our percentage increases were concerning. He asked us about our enrollment. We explained why it's basically taking more resources today than potentially, you know, years back based on student needs and meeting their needs. He talked about, you know, if there's any other ways of things we can cut out of the budget. We talked to him about the potential of spacing out the curriculum purchase. That is currently in the budget at 200,000. So there might be an option there. And he wanted me to get back to him on Friday with what would be the impact of if the assumption is made that we received our capital request for technology, the impact on the budget that we had submitted. That's pretty much where we left it. We have a capital, our cap, the capital meeting is December 6th at 1:00 when the school's request is on the list for review. Yeah, please.
We talked about the foundation review commission and the chapter 70 money, whether or not it was equitable fair sufficient. And I think we all very strongly said no. So we talked about kind of joint advocacy at the state level for implementing the foundation budget, the foundation review committees recommendation. They were super close and then it fell apart. Because we made the point pretty strongly that, you know, using the graph of level, what we were funded with actual level service, we can't continue to go the way that we're going for the school. The money's, it's not going to work. And so I think that they were all pretty receptive to that concept, I felt like. And so advocacy was another piece that we brought up.
I apologize, it was a miscommunication on my part. I think it's important that a school committee member be at those meetings just to show our support for the schools. And I, I knew George couldn't make it, but I thought you were going.
And I thought, yeah.
Yeah, so.
It really wasn't like, we didn't make any decisions or any.
No, it was.
And they know.
And there was, there were no members of other boards there, which, but absolutely.
No, we want, I'm just saying it didn't seem weird or like anything like, there was no awkward kind of, we were all right there at all. So we'll figure it out.
And that's not December 6th. When is the next one?
So at, you know, moving forward at this point, what we discussed was, I'll probably have another meeting with the town manager, but so he can give us a little bit more specific guidance. But you're going to, he knows that you, that this is my budget, not your budget. And so you're going to have to make some decisions moving forward, whether this becomes your budget or a different version is your budget. And you have to have that. Your voting, the public hearing is January 2nd and your voting is January 16th. I believe something has to go in the paper at some point soon.
Is the meeting with FENCOM before or after that?
After.
After.
Yeah. Because we're presenting our.
So can I add something? The finance working group is meeting Tuesday. So I would imagine that group will come to some consensus about recommendations to give you for what you want to do with the superintendent's budget in terms of making your, because I think the paper has to have your budget in it. It's not just a notice, right? So it seems like December is where you're trying to finalize that. Am I understanding?
Yeah, I just don't know for sure when my December date is, if it's going to mesh with our December meeting.
Which December?
The December date, I have to put something in the newspaper. I feel like it's.
It's after.
I said I could check tomorrow.
It's tomorrow.
I thought it was the 16th of December for some reason, but.
Well, that would be good.
It would be. Because it has to be certain more days before January 2nd. So I can't imagine it's going to be before the 12th, right? That doesn't make sense.
Gail, I know has it all laid out.
George is like our expert on this. But regardless, next Tuesday, at least the working group will be.
Any other questions?
So basically, we'll have to be voting on the 12th and December 2nd with the next meeting.
Yeah.
If you could vote your preliminary, you may make a change by the time you vote on the 16th, but we have to have.
Actually, no, you're right. We don't vote on that. We just look at it and kind of make any changes or whatever. You don't actually officially vote on it.
Yeah, we're not officially approving it.
We're just kind of making agreements on it.
I mean, because in theory, that's.
That's what the 6th, January.
What we're publishing in the paper is what the publisher and we base on. And then you will decide.
So it's kind of agree and disagree. Yes, there you go.
It might be that my budget is what gets published and everyone is reacting to that in the public hearing. There you go. And then you vote on your final.
I think so.
Okay, go ahead, Skylar.
Skylar.
Thank you.
So I just want to confirm my note, Mary. Just quickly. Are we confirmed 26th?
November 26th.
Okay, yes.
The Christmas parade, the 26th.
No, November 26th. So just to confirm, on November 26th, there's an executive session at 6:00 p.m. for an issue related to the contract. So that's confirmed with the association.
It's not here.
Yes, that's here. And the two elementary principals are also expected to attend. And what the vision would be, the association can speak to you, they would leave, the principals can speak to you, they can leave, and then you can discuss. On the dates that are on this page, which I don't even know what number that is, everything seems to be cut off. But anyway, we already talked about the finance group, the outreach group, efficiency and effectiveness. CIP again is on the 6th at 1:00. We need to make sure the shaman ronies attends with us as well. The Mashpee Christmas Parade at 5:30, I don't know if that's an opportunity. You want to do something as a group? Do you want to ride on a float? Do you want to carry something, dress up? Anyway, that's usually a Saturday.
Rain date of the night.
Initially, there is a rain date because that was very controversial last year, not to have a rain date.
Is there a special?
There's usually, yeah, there's usually metal. We do have a Mashpee Public Schools banner if you want to walk and carry it. Do you want to throw candy to the audience?
Don't throw, wasn't that one of the safety thing? The throwing of the candy?
Well, it would probably go against the wellness policy.
Yeah, the wellness policy. I can't, I don't remember.
Well, think about that. We're not meeting again before that happens. So if that, if that's like a team building you'd like to do, we need to, you can let me know, I'll send out something, just send out a survey to see what you're doing. We have our, again, the public hearing is on January 2nd and your vote is on January 16th. This is not right on this form. Oh, next Monday, the Southport Falcons tour is taking place. And at least two of you would be welcome to attend if you wanted to. So 9:00, we're picking them up at Southport on a school bus, Hope and I. And it goes Coombs School roughly, it's a 40-minute visit, little travel time in between. Then it's the Quashan School for 40 minutes, little travel time. It ends at the middle high school, 40-minute tour, ending at 11:30 in the Falcon Cafe for discussions at lunch.
And what time do you leave here on the bus? What time are you getting?
We leave from the high school.
Leave from the high school.
Probably we're leaving.
10 and 9.
10 and 9. 8:15. Because the Southport Falcons have put out that their people need to be promptly ready to leave at 9:00 from their activity center.
And they were last year.
So we, yes, we will be ready.
I'm going to see if I can come out. I've always wanted to do that.
So that's all I have on.
So it starts at, where is that?
It starts.
No.
8:50. If I wanted to be on the bus.
If you want to be on the bus, 8:50. At the high school. So that it ends with your car being at the high school.
Yeah, so you finish at there at the Falcon Cafe.
Uh-huh. Okay, that's all, I think that's on there that I was going to highlight.
And I got my program of studies. I have a, I have an incoming 7th grader, so I found out about the program of studies. Very exciting. That's December 4th.
The night, Renter City's night.
What?
Renter City's night.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't realize, I thought you were saying you've got it.
No, no.
Actually, I got it. Very exciting.
Professor, should we follow up on the science fair night, getting onto the calendar? Because there are events that night, if that's a night event, is it a day event?
No, it's a day. I'll follow up with the first thing tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, good. And then covered our Christmas parade item. So I don't believe there are any other items. I don't know if anybody has any.
Well, it was on the minutes as we, us agreeing that it was going to be June. And that unless the leadership team decides that it's going to happen, should happen before that, that's the plan.
So it's going to be our June 15th?
Right.
Second, obviously change it.
Will you take that one, Hope?
I'm ready, Gail, next to me.
Okay.
And the next quarterly meeting of the working group, not working group, school.
Leadership team?
Leadership team group with the tribal staff is on the 17th, which is from 4:15 to 5:15. And then I do know that we have staff tours are taking place on various Mondays. And a little of a staff meeting, they are going there for that.
You know, if we're not going to have another meeting, if we're not going to do a meeting at tribal headquarters until June, it might be nice to have like an update on the activities of that leadership team. Because I get to go to the meetings, but I don't.
Yeah, we can have that. We are trying to set up similar to the Falcons, Southport Falcon tour, a tour for tribal council members where they come here and they'll do the same thing when we go to all the schools. So Gail's still trying to get that scheduled. And then one other thing that wasn't, that only Patty and I have mentioned, I just want to get it on a future agenda, is the family opinion survey for next year. We've got to start figuring out when we're going to do that and get that written, et cetera, so. So maybe that's something that we can talk about on the 26th.
That's a good idea, part of that meeting.
Yeah.
Anybody else serving?
So is it confirmed with Mr. Trivory or the basketball teams are coming?
That's in the process right now being scheduled. It's just trying to figure out which team will be in agreement to do that. You have to get a boys and girls back to back. So it's, we're working logistics out league wise, who we could use as the best opponent.
So probably not going to happen until after the 1st of the year?
I'm not positive on that.
Okay.
Anything else?
We're just trying to stretch your ending time so you don't set a record.
It's not about records, it's what it takes down.
Mission ineffective.
Is that most of your turn?
I, so.
Oh, go ahead.
So.
My second.
Most of your by John, second by Nicole.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Thank you, everybody.